Called it order and uh asked for approval of our last board meeting.
The minutes, Jackie's not rude yet, we'll do that just in a minute. We'll come back.
Okay. Alright, uh there again, you know, we've got, we've got a bunch of stuff to do over. Stuff on this dinner stuff. And uh contract release and we got the upcoming bid opening. Uh and first on the agenda, they Brenda Ortiz.
Okay, thanks Steve. And uh back to these plans. We've got to have that pedestrian connectivity plan adopted by the town. Let me show you this. For us to start getting money from the Southwestern Commission to start that plan. Because Ford Street is in that plan. That's what gives us a start uh for our sidewalk and our biking path without doing a year's study prior to that. So we've got to jump on that. And Bobby, if you'll look up there in this resolution, this is only a guide. As far as a walking path anywhere in town. You.
Yeah, but, but, but it is, it is a guide up there. At the top of, now it says now, now therefore it be about the town of Robbinsville, Grand County State hereby adopts the town of Robbinsville Pedestrian Connectivity Plan. I haven't seen the whole plan, I've seen parts of it. And I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna adopt anything unless I see that whole plan. And I've seen parts of it.
It's on the, do you want me to pull it up on the computer for you? It's on the Grand County website.
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, yeah, pull up a copy of that.
If you can bring it up.
I don't think this is, is this?
It goes to Grand County website and right at the front.
What is your website?
Grand County dot gov maybe. But I'll tell you though, if you're keying pedestrian connectivity plan, Grand County, it may go right to that page. And you should bring it up before I came. But it's got.
We did, we did, we did look at parts of this plan here that we would, on the greenway, that the town would, like the school property. Now, when it gets on Randy Jordan and, and these other folks, you know, we haven't got one letter from those landowners that, that.
Oh, well, they've not been asked, they didn't do that.
Well, they should have been asked before we adopt any of them.
Sometimes we're trying to run it over and we're trying to communicate with them.
Like Sue Millsam's down here.
We're getting a lot of.
They, they, we, we, Miss Colver, Tri-County Community College, uh, the Colver, me, uh, and all, uh, they can just about, because one of the protection paths is taking the old railroad route. And, and that in turn totally leaves what they, their bargaining chip was going down the creek. See that, the railroad normally followed the creek, but here in town it didn't. See, see it left Chioa and went, well, to Lola or, and, and went to, through the middle of town, basically, and, and out by the school and right straight to Stanford.
Right.
And all, well, but the old railroad, if you can, if you remember back, in the middle of the railroad, you just about see what Sue Millsam's cooking on her stuff.
Where is that, Brenda, what side is that on? I mean, it ain't on this Robbinsville uh pedestrian connectivity plan that.
Yes, it's Robbins.
Don't have the full map though.
You click on that and then walk it up and you can print it.
Seventy-five pages?
It's a seventy-five page plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it ain't got a, it ain't got a detailed map, it's got section maps on.
And uh, uh, some of the property on there down, down here on Circle Street especially. And going out uh Cody Street and all. Since the Tri, since Tri-County has opened at the park and in behind the pool and, and the, the old old basketball court used to be and all. And that child development back there, since they put that park in back there, that is a drug hideaway slash uh, uh.
Drug.
Drug. Honestly, honestly it is. And you can, you can go and ask the Sheriff's Department, how many times they have gone in and run people out at two o'clock in the morning? But you know exactly.
We might be looking at their own plan.
There's no nonsense going on at two o'clock in the morning. There's nothing.
Because Ford Street is part of this plan.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it was, it was put in, you know, the one we, where we've looked at, this one's getting confusing. I mean, Greg's doing the great thing and we're doing our thing and you're, the plan that went to Junelast to Greg, that went up to the Greg.
Just working to help y'all. Well, Rick knows I'm doing this.
Yeah.
But uh I decided to step down as the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee so I could focus on some projects that would help y'all. Because as the Chair of that committee, you're doing minutes and calling meetings and that is not my thing. My thing is getting stuff done. And uh, and you can do that if you're not so tied up and uh, and those are needed and necessary things to make the organization grow. But it's more, more important to talk with people like the Southwestern Commission and.
Well, was that, was that not, was that not at one time, was they, did the town not adopt something just for that Ford Street area?
You were talking.
We had our landowners come in and, and talk to the Alderman and call them at home that did not want this on their property. So we were looking at alternative routes of coming up through the old part of town going to Junelast to Greg. I think it's still on there, on the DOT, letting them get into the foot. But as far as the greenway that goes up the creek, we did agree to the part on the school that they want.
Right.
Now, from the school loan, it belongs to human beings, not us.
But can you agree to just parts of a plan? You're talking that springway plan.
The whole plan where it starts hitting private individuals. Now, we do have an easement across those individuals. A sewer easement across those individuals. But, but you know, that fourteen-foot strip is, is, the way it's roped, it was even, is for sewer maintenance. It ain't for walking or bicycling. They didn't agree to, the landowners didn't agree to it in that time. And I think that's what they're saying, we're gonna use these sewer easements. But we can't use those sewer easements for walking or bicycling.
This is the forward. Nobody can do anything without the town and the county's approval. That's where you've got your.
It ain't the town, the county, it's the people. It ain't us, it ain't us three.
Well, and we can't.
It's the people, we can't, we can't.
I know we could.
I'd love to build a, a good pay grade all the way up that creek walking path.
But again, it was like something was said this morning, taking people's property. We just don't live that.
No.
And we're not, I don't see us doing that in the future.
I'll never do it.
If they can agree to something. So that's where I think everybody's getting too excited over that one. Our town or county government is not gonna be running roughshod over people because the people, even Teresa's saying she getting on that path around her and uh, and we listen.
We're spending too much time on something that we know ain't gonna happen. Well, let's just, let's put our thoughts to something that we can make some progress.
Well, that's the reason though, so, and I'm trying to think what.
Here, you know, I, I would, I would agree to, to parts of this thing that, that, that people wanted.
You would agree to Ford Street and to.
I wouldn't agree to Ford Street, I, you know.
Unless all the property.
Unless all of them. I mean, I, if you want it, I'll agree to your spot right there, you can put anything you want to on your, but I won't agree for nobody else down there. That's up to them and they can come to the town and say, hey, we'd like to have that through our yard. That's just like my neighbor wants with her mailbox, my driveway, I won't agree to that.
So what do we do now? He said to start with this, to get funding to do those plans for Ford Street, we'd have to adopt this plan.
We can't adopt all that plan though.
Well, we can if, if, if every individual on Ford Street that owns property
Right.
Will comes, hey, well, you know, we want this. And we'll, we'll jump on it and do just exactly what they want.
Absolutely.
Here's what we need to do then.
But I need to do it for ninety-nine percent of them. If one of them says, I don't want it on my property.
Well, that's what we need to put in there. We need to start out the first paragraph. Any, any part of this plan affects any landowner, the information must be given, give the information. I mean, we need to get.
We don't get that damn anything.
Wait a minute. I've got, this plan, the adoption of this plan is contingent upon the approval of.
Landowners.
Of landowners. And working, yes.
Let's get approval from the landowners.
Well, we got the proof. Not that we've, we've got a landowner here that's approving.
I've got a question.
They all say what it is.
Okay, my question would be like, there's a lot of controversy though over who owns the train tracks. I mean, can you say, I've got a deed, I think for mine, but is it a good deed or is it not?
We're researching that right now and I'm gonna send it to the school or government.
But what if I don't own it, then I've got those things.
You know, they, they were two quick claims done on Ford Street.
Yeah.
And, and, and they're binding by law. As a quick claim, those folks own those two pieces of property.
Wait a minute, if it was quick claim from a government, they can't quit claim from a government.
They can't, it wasn't quick claim from a government, it was quick claim from a railroad.
Right, if they done that then.
Yeah.
But the railroad gave it to the county.
Right, and that, that was after it was quick claim.
Well, that, the quick claim is, it happens, if it's clouded title, seven years. If not, it's twenty-one adverse possession, twenty-one years.
That's right.
So if I build something. If I've been mowing it, I've been mowing it.
If you mow the grass, if you mow the grass on it and that.
I've been mowing it.
I've been mowing it. He's had mature trees down that fell on me.
Okay.
I mean, often.
I've been caring for it.
Well, let's just put in here that this adoption is contingent upon the approval of property owners.
And no property will be condemned, no private property will be condemned by any board or any commission or anything and.
That just goes against our culture here, we're trying to protect.
You know, I mean, you know, years ago, they were forced to.
Doing this plan, that you hear a lot of that.
Here's your five hundred dollars and you move.
It's easy to take in Atlanta where you don't know that woman, she scratched her whole life to make a living to pay for that little chunk of lane.
Right.
Now, I want to, I own mine straight to heaven and all the way to hell, that's the way I look at it. It's mine, I don't want you owning.
Now, I'd probably give you mine if it would help the community.
Give it to us. You get that old, we'll take it.
But I would be very upset if you took it.
Right, oh, yes.
Yeah, you could come and say, Brenda, we need this and that'd be a different story.
And that's what we're saying.
Well, we need it for a car if you're letting.
Well, I'm not disappointed and I can see that.
We're looking for a piece of property to.
Well, do you want Mandy? I can send her an electronic copy of this resolution and then let her write in there, watch, you're just saying that this approval is contingent upon the approval of.
Landowner.
But would, 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 would that still not be a dead piece of paper though, until you have each, each, each property owner's signature with them?
It would be, but the plan, we have a plan.
We got a plan.
Yes, we'd have a plan to start.
Now, we ain't got a real plan to adopt.
We, no, we don't, but we've got a plan of going on the, on the DOT and uh, that, that don't affect those folks.
Ford Street in this plan with a sidewalk and a biking path.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna, I mean, if they're gonna lose, maybe they're gonna come to you, you give us permission to go through here with the sidewalk.
Part of it comes up your, by your barn up through there.
Yeah, I know.
But you don't care to.
I don't know, I would think back. Why they done it so not really telling me?
Well, this ain't, this ain't the state, this is the, this is the pedestrian greenway.
One court gonna be in court with the state though.
But we want, we want part of your cornfield back there. I mean, that's two close quarters to, to hurt it. And I can see it coming out to the road and using the side of the road. DOT making, you know, a path there and, and even Tri-County, it ain't gonna bother them, you know, or, or if Herb will give an easement on his. He said he would at one time on his side of the creek to get up there. But I, I can see it coming up the old part of town, up through town, which is not a too desirable wall. But I just don't think people are really liking coming right through their backyard.
I know they hope, they done hope us.
Yeah, we might have had too many.
Well, that's, that's the, that ain't, you know, but I'm taking that.
I mean, I, I'd take you down here right now and show you where, you know, you know how multiple roads.
Um, yes, yes.
I, I can show you beaten pass down where multiple roads was and, and my, my property cornered on traces. And here's the range.
Oh, God.
Laying, laying, laying out here. You, you see one of my, I mean, and, and this was no back path, this was, is a parking lot for Tri-County Community College. Want that Tri-County Community College done because they, they put them a picnic table, I don't remember that big old tray, beautiful, yeah, I, for, for the summer out there and all. But it also opened the door for.
Drugs.
Drug use, thugs breaking and entering. Hey, I'm gonna go over here and break in at Snyder Hill and, and everybody don't be looking for my car. I'm down here behind the, the swimming pool, well, nobody's looking at swimming behind swimming pool for the, the person that's on foot running with, you know, somebody's valuables and jumps in the car and, and he's at, at Moose Brachian down one twenty-nine going towards Texas.
But you know something, when a community, and this is something we're doing now, if our planning can help us to be more economically affluent, then sometimes your drug use, if we target more young people with children and so forth, where people can live better and we got better jobs, it decreases that crime and drug use along. Drugs are a fact and even one time years ago, I came to mayor and tried to get him to say that we've wanted to clean family living in town and uh, maybe that's something, you have to say these things tactfully that, that we really don't want drugs in our community because it drives them.
We tried to make it pretty hard, we've, we've adopted ordinances.
I remember whenever it was adopted.
Where it's busted for, for a felony. That you can't have water and fluids.
Right.
Really?
In your name, yeah, and, and I know the person that was touched off.
And it's in every, it's in every town that's doing that.
Well, those are proactive things and uh, that are sort of.
I don't think you're gonna have, it would be parry if you've got, if you've got a drug felony or a child molestation felony, I don't think you'll have water or syrup or power.
There, dear.
You will move some of those out.
And, and that's how Andrea's got them out of their city limits.
Exactly right.
And see, the, then they went, they went.
Manahala.
Manahala, they went to Tawson and, and out and Murphy, down towards Murphy, uh, and Robbinsville. We ended up out here in Snyder Town and Milltown area. This, you know, well, why did all these make for me?
But the first, first time we, first time we done one, it was somebody's best buddy, they had a little pull with the law. We was discriminating against them, blah, blah, but they can use all the water to cook their mess and I just don't, I don't understand it, but they, it might, it might not have any teeth in it, but we didn't try it long enough to see.
Well, yous are doing a lot of proactive things and I didn't know about y'all, Rick had something on me.
I'm not a, that all the person, I mean, you know, just here, but I was saying, I thought about that, you know, because I know what the research says. I know that, you know, they say it can clean up community and it gets better and safer and all those things. So I really put a lot of thought into, would it? You know, could it? And how long would it take?
It's gonna take more than just one or two things.
And so I came to the conclusion as a property owner, for me, that I couldn't live with the length of time property today because I would have so many problems in that length of time. I'm having trouble dealing with now and I might have more, so that's how I decided it, but I just wanted to throw that in there. I did really consider it.
Yes, but because those, those trade-offs, it's like.
I think, Brenda, that, that, and, and we try to say, if we get, using that scope of properties, that, that they will lay it. If we can get it pretty and keep it pretty, I think it'll start growing and people will want it. But the starting ground was just the whole thing and, and, I mean, from day one, the last meeting we had with Rick and them was go to every landowner that it affects and bring it back. And I haven't seen it, now it might.
I'm best to not be in there.
I don't think you would.
Okay, because I don't ever recall hearing that.
We preached it from day one. I mean, when it, when the word got out that they was doing the path, people started calling. And every meeting that's been brought up, we told them from day one that we won't support that part. Now, we did adopt the first portion that we supported it and we will support it on the Dillor Road, like Dillor Road. But I worry it hits Randy Jordan and them, that's up to Randy Jordan and when they say.
Well, let me ask you this because I started saying I don't have anything but time, but I've got a full-time job in addition to trying to do some of these things. Do you want me to just step back and start a new study of Ford Street and get the property?
You've got good ideas on Ford Street, I, I'm just saying, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do Ford Street.
It can be done.
Right, here's how we do it.
It can be, I mean, it can be, but it's gonna have to be a Ford Street community project, that's the whole Ford Street.
And that's what we're, we're writing, that's Community Development Plan, you know, says an economic development, uh, community development is economic development. Successful small towns tend to balance short-term economic gains with long-term community development goals.
Right.
And that, that's what we're trying to say here, we're trying to say, hey, we're gonna try to clean up the community and put the infrastructure and do everything we can.
To manage this.
But we ain't gonna step on no property.
Right.
And, and I mean, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get our plan.
What you're saying, you're respecting your citizens.
Yeah, we're not dealing with doctors and lawyers like in Atlanta and, and, you know.
That's worse.
We, we got loggers and tobacco farmers and, and potato dealers and.
Well, is there any thing?
I saw a plant project went through and everybody, everybody was behind it. I mean, they may have done want to tell that it's personal stuff, they just didn't want to say yes, get it done or something, but the whole community was behind that because everybody now knew that we needed that.
Right.
And there was no.
And that's the attitude we gotta change, you people down there that's saying, hey, I don't want them, we gotta show them, say, look, this ain't gonna be a drug alley. This ain't gonna be drug use walking through. This is gonna be the kids and the people that's trying to walk for their health and their cancer and their diabetes and, and you know, like. And that's how, that's what we gotta get in their minds, right now, they'll run us off, we go down there telling them. I mean, that's, I mean, they, they fight me over, one person did, and said, hey.
Should they come to my house?
They came to my house.
Well, why don't they tell?
They come for you.
Well, they fight me out of this.
Well, they don't have no need to come to a public meeting, they own their chunk of property and that's just a public because they're gonna get.
Like, they, they're, I'm retired or I'm disabled or, or I'm an employee and of a municipality or whatever and this forty-two-foot front and two-hundred-and-seventy-foot deep lot, I'm the king of this castle.
Well, they don't want nobody.
And they don't, yeah, and they don't want, you know, and, and, and they've, they've seen, I, I think one thing that has really hurt a lot of the people about growth and stuff is they've seen too many things, it's been brought up and then the town or the county or whatever just puts it on the back burner and never keep it up. It's just like that, uh.
Little basketball court.
Basketball court down there. It's just like whenever I was, was the county, worked at maintenance, over maintenance and stuff, uh, found a, a sliding board that had been there for twenty years that had that much dust in it and the old funeral home and you know where it ended up? I gave it to, found that they was needing a slide over at Stickhole Valley. Whenever it was first started, they was renovating the old gym. Give it to them like that. And it still even had the, the box had rotted off of it and the hardware and everything. And if this slide was like a five-hundred-dollar slide at that time, it's over twelve-hundred dollars to just buy a small Rubbermaid now. Slide this here was stainless steel, sixteen-foot I think it was, and had the, the railing and the pipes and everything for the ladder.
Well, there is.
And, and, and the balls have been dropped so many times and people know that, and has got accustomed to. Well, they ain't no sense in going to these public meetings because it's still, they don't pick up the ball and they don't run and get the fun out of the game and then they're gonna lay it down and walk off running. And, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm so afraid that's what, you know.
Well, do you see that happening with Ford Street? Is that the reason?
No, no, I don't see it happening on Ford Street, I mean, you know.
We could do it on one street, then we'd be easy, press go down here on this street, say, hey, look over here, what, what we have over here.
Right, see.
Well, see, I was thinking about going back, once we do this, we got another street, Circle Street, right there at the back that is really a bad drug place that we can sit in, work it on and carry that all the way out to Stanford.
The town of Robbinsville never knows this part of town's ever existed.
I, well.
Never, and they still don't. But, but the bad part of it is, we, we build everything to one side.
Well.
And we've got everything pulling to one side. Now, this part isn't, none of these folks have ever had any.
People that had money and owned a property started that with that.
As customers, embellishes we build it.
I think the number one objective on Ford Street, we, we, we run way past the, we can build the prettiest little back path down there, plant the prettiest little tree and we still got a damn swamp.
Well, that's why I was asking.
Before anything else is done. The sewer has got to be moved, the drainage has got to be done and then you can build on it. But that's, that's what's wrong with now, they just kept failing, pushing, they're failing, moving.
It, it's like, there's several millions, millions of dollars in this Safe Rites to School program and it has a surplus of that. Because it's even being, it's not gonna be funded because they, it's not being taken advantage of. And there's, there's enough money there for us to fix Ford Street and do a wonderful job.
But is, is DOT not up that, they're, they're one, they've got one of the major votes in it?
Yes.
You remember back in nineteen ninety-one whenever.
DOT don't have, they, that's not DOT law.
But because it's a safe route to school, they'll take over the project, but not take over the street.
All the kids still walk from the school down there after that change.
And they bike down there too.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it about that.
But if you remember back in nineteen ninety-one, whenever I was first on with Yule Smith and Jean Rose, we had a study run, DOT was involved at some of the meetings, uh, Wayne Caringer, uh, Morris was, he was with the state at the time. And then he come on out there to uh. Alright, and then he come on out there to, uh.
Wilmer Roberts or?
No, uh, the 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 wards, Carol Carol Ward and all. And we had a conjunction with them about taking a forty, a thirty-six or a forty inch pipe. The same size that they had coming across from, uh, down here for the, uh, the red light there. It, they was like a twenty inch pipe shoots across there and it empties into a forty, thirty-six or forty inch copper pipe. Goes over the corner of Ford Street, like there where Jan's building used to be, that she sold. And and then it shot right straight back to the corner of Godfrey Street and there was a opening. And then it emptied into the. The creek.
Right.
And all, DOT said, no. They was the first, they was the ones that stopped that first, a- and and it was, uh, had everything ready. No, we ain't gonna do that, you can't tie, you cannot tie on to our, that to drain.
That, you know, that that, uh, that that pipe there don't drain but one, one drop in.
Uh, I meant one.
That's coming off the hill and and.
And and right there, that where they had that one.
But what screwed them is when they built, when they built Robin Ridge and they filled that little hump in there, Robin Ridge, see, there was a drainage that come in there.
It has a Safe Rites to School. That, and of course, people have changed and saying and, uh. And rules have changed and everything, and they're wanting to make our streets better, number one. So people will get out and walk better for their health, for our children to maybe walk to school. Bike and do those things for better health.
But do they still let, do they still let them? I thought they cut the the school draw, uh, any school activity. Any kids walking or riding a bicycle or anything from the front of the school down here. Is that not cut off now? Cause you you have to enter from the back, don't you?
I think it's for walking.
Okay, a kid cannot be dropped off in the road.
But they can walk to their house, can't they?
Oh, yeah.
See, that would come right in to watch the tunnel.
Right, right. Well, that was the reason, uh, when I saw that program. Why I called the guy in Raleigh, it's over this, and he said, yeah, I said, you don't have to ever be a DOT pro. To, for us to find a, a project like that.
I mean, could.
I mean, that's like, a really good project, just falling from the sky for the town. Uh, I mean.
I agree.
Wish we'd thought that, thought of that before you ever did any pipe down there or anything, we'd let DOT.
What can they do, I mean, on on that project, what to?
Their engineers will have to come in and talk with you and tell you what they see is face.
For widening a, widening of the sidewalks.
Yes, yeah.
We can't change much elevation on that, too, if we do, it's gonna be a damn, it's just barely, barely running now, it's taking hours to drain.
What I was saying, Bobby, if we can get some other outside funding. And dewater that whole trailer park at one whack, that that whole. I can't see. Property owners objecting to that, we can dewater the street, but if we could dewater the whole thing. Uh, while we're making an attempt like that, the deed is gonna do. And that would improve their progress several hundred thousand dollars to do it. Cause it would cut the cost of building on the side.
I mean, you know, far as far as replacing what's existing on Ford Street, I wouldn't have any problem with it. But far as going past that sidewalk over on those floors, I have a problem with it. If they want it, we'll do it. If the landlord wants it, shoot, yeah.
Against how they not be talking to any property owners.
That's something, you know, if it's a flyer, if you wanna take a, I don't care if send it out in the mail or what, you know, I. I don't care, but but but.
That was about that revitalization up to here, what.
Right.
Yeah, this this over here is what got them all hot.
I know.
It got them hot, they hot. They ready to hang Rick Davis, some tell you, they mad at him over.
Well, you know.
Been thrown in there and I ain't got nothing to do, I I will support it if everybody wants it. But if everybody don't want it, old Bob's out. I don't care who gets mad or.
This economic development panel in the process, you know, it says, number seven, Bible community economic development. Involves the use of a comprehensive package of strategies and tools rather than a piecemeal approach. Decisions about what to do and why to do to do it have to be based on local conditions, context and capacity. There is no silver bullet, no one strategy works for everyone. And don't take anything off the table when deciding about what strategies to pursue. And that's what we're we're trying to, we're trying to do some planning and stuff too. But I guess what we're trying to say is probably. We're we're for everything that the people for.
Well, now, are you gonna come talk to the people? You told me not to.
Well, do you think you can do it? I mean, do you?
I can approach them, probably Jimmy wouldn't. And, uh. But there is some research into the property ownership and, uh.
I I I tell you, I'm gonna be honest with you on that.
And I don't know.
I don't think this board will get into their research on their property. I guess up to the county and whoever wants to try to prove that they don't own it.
Right.
Uh, to 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 a, to a standpoint on my part, they own it.
Well, Rick said the parts that the county owns. But I did say the ones where the quick, the two quick ones do, cause this is coming up time and time again. If they own that Ferrin Square and the council of governments, uh. Or the school of government could probably determine that they have, or they sack their state law, um, things like that.
Max Goff reproved to own it. They was moving him out.
And what did he get?
He he won his court case, he owned it.
He lived, he actually lived on it.
He lived on the property.
Mr. Wesley lived on it.
He owned it to the middle of the street and over, over the middle road.
But you know, and I.
Badges place. Railroad graded at that time and and that alleyway back through there belonged to the railroad. Yet they ain't none of that alley on the railroad, not none of it, I mean, all the way around.
Well, number one. I need to research if we didn't have to have this Safe Rites to School. Normally is sidewalks and biking paths for children. Do we have to have something besides just the sidewalk? And before we get into research and stuff. Let me just go talk to those property owners and see if they'll. I don't think anybody would object to a sidewalk, I mean, we're just putting back what we have to do with.
We're gonna put sidewalk back, ain't we?
Some of, some of, what we're what we're factoring with, but but. One thing about that sidewalk, once we put a sidewalk back in now, it's, sidewalk just sunk real good. It's it's just holding two inches of water out now with a new sidewalk, even if we piped it under it. We're gonna keep damming it up now, that's why we ain't really. Really been too, too aggressive on fixing that sidewalk, cause they're all gonna have to be tore out when this drainage goes in. That's gonna be your drainage, I mean, there ain't no other way, it's gonna be on the edge of the road.
But you know, too, it's an eyesore to me, I guess.
Well, sure, sure.
Nobody, the property, it's people that's supposed to own that, it don't bother them. But it's, it's a mess to me.
Well, well, all the beds.
No more important than any other town citizen, but I feel.
Well, I ain't neither, I got Snyder Hill and Millsap Hill that goes under my house, you you think Ford Street gets water?
I get that.
I got pumps under my, under my.
Well.
And I've got, I've I've got a.
And I waved water today to get my mail out of my mailbox. And there's nowhere else I can put the mailbox.
Well, we're up in the beds waiting tomorrow.
Well, that's good.
But that that, you know, right where you're waving water at, uh, basically where your mailbox at, you own that, that don't belong to the tank. That's your, that's your swag out to that road. There ain't no easements or nothing, you you own to the white line down there.
And if I fill it in, it's just gonna put me back on the other side on somebody else.
And they ain't a thing we can.
I know.
You know, honestly, they ain't.
That's why, Bobby.
That road needs milled, plum out.
Yes.
It needs milled out and and put that way.
Well, that's what I'm hoping to do with this work we're doing.
Start milling no road, cause we're gonna dig it plum up. I mean, we're digging it out.
Well, you're saying after, after we do all our improvements, then that's our full street banking.
Yes, yes.
We need the drainage in, Jack, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Even the sewer improvements.
It's used too, I mean, that's that's, we know, but.
But number one is drainage is what we need.
I would put in those sewer lines.
Cause if we build that new road.
Was the reason Philip thought.
We'll cut it right back out.
We could jump the gun. And our thinking has been, well, you're making a mess down there anyway, that we wouldn't have to do anything temporary. Get DOT engineers in there and let them design it, uh. Uh, and, well, Don Costellic, he's a a planner, he was talking to me. I've got a perfect little plot to put in, even like a little silk pot. And plant it full of flowers and things like that. You can do things like that that will catch sun, but it won't begin to catch all of them. But, uh, but that was the reason for me coming in with this, to where we could get started. Kind you've got your, uh, uh, sewer lines in. We'd already be in the process of getting the plans down on this.
Well, you know. We we could adopt it if the people wanted it, we could say, hey, yeah, buddy.
Well, we're Jackie's idea of including, and if they come to you. Say, we adopted this contingent upon property owners approval.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't sit down and go on to that. You say don't have my property, brother, that's just a dead issue.
Yeah.
What are we adopting if he done said? I mean, why don't we adopt parts that will work and not have to go through this again?
Teresa done said it, she's a property owner.
He, why don't we just focus on Ford Street? That part of the connectivity plan, let them come in and look at it. If they can help on the drainage and and.
Let me, let's, let me.
You're right.
And and. One of the connectivity plan, Ford Street, I mean, I don't care if they do that, but now every, every landlord down there has gotta be agreeing on it.
Right, right. We're agreeing on that damn wide, that's that's the thing we do.
But if if they'll agree, you know, if 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 it's Safe Rites to School will come in and say, hey, we'll put new sidewalk. Drainage, we'll help you with the drainage, uh, if they wanna put a bike path on over there, if those landlords say, hey, yeah, buddy. We'll we'll do it, I'd I'd agree to it. But I, as far as this part's gonna stand, take it off the table, I will not agree with myself, and I think y'all. It's just Bob talking, but I don't have no part of that, I'd love to see Ford Street going to work. If town's gonna grow, it's gonna grow off Ford Street and the Bible, it's in the queen.
That's amazing, I never would've thought that when I bought that property in. Cause I would like to be on somewhere it's worth while.
Your, that stretch from yours, straight through Jimmy Potters right now is the part start trying to grow on. It's got a little bit of drainage on it. You could build it up and and you could get drainage over those little drop in that you've got, or a bit. But those others, you couldn't build Wayne Caringer's trailer park up and get drainage, you can't get across Jimmy. You can't pond up over on, on.
Words.
Words, and Ward can't build his up, he'd be flooding out the sand ran. I mean, that that's just.
Just see if we can't get enough money together to really fix that whole thing. And I can't see why property owners would object to their property being dewatered. There's a possibility that could be done.
What would, you know, dewatering those guys below, uh, off in the in the hole there is is. It's definitely gonna be done off of Ford Street.
Yes.
Uh, there's no way of putting any drains in, uh, and going anywhere with them down in those bottoms, I mean. You you just ain't got no, you've got to have that little two-foot rise up to the road to get it out of there. But what comes off of Ford Street would be a big difference, I mean, it would be a big difference, we could.
Well, on Ford Street, when it comes a heavy downpour, water's gonna pour out the flat area, I don't care what, where it is.
If that sidewalk wasn't there, it wouldn't, if you had it cut like in front of Brandon, right there above Brandon's used to, my god, it's awful. It still ain't good, but it used to pond up right there, I could come through and splash water about on your front door. You know, just that one section there where the sidewalk's gone without that little four-inch lill. Let it go over and 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 then down into that. It drained that. The other end's got a, a long, barely two inches of fall.
That's why we got, we have a sidewalk.
If that sidewalk wasn't there, it would all drain into that little bit of a ditch and and out there real fast.
Is they not no way to put a grate there and let it drain?
Ain't no fall.
No fall. In ninety-one, I think that they said they shot gray and I think it was a eight-inch, eight-inch, eight, eighty-inch fall from. From about where the basketball court is to the stop sign if I, right there to.
Well, that can even go that way, and that's.
I mean, that that's out, but I mean, that was, you know, they they shot gray that time and they were just a eighty-inch fall. And that, that's done, you can't even drain, you can't, you can't lay pipe and drain. Up the pipe because it ends up level. You know, it's.
If you put in twelve.
You're you're getting this here, back four.
Twelve inch pipe, you know, you'd be.
Not drain four inches.
Might be four inches above ground, right there where you started, what it coming down to.
And then.
That's a bad deal. But I believe we're chasing too many ponies, we need to catch one.
We need to, we need to figure out which one we think will work and go with.
Yeah, this this thing's gonna work.
We want same thing you want, Brenda, when you tell them how to get there.
Yeah.
And we, and we know what you're saying, we understand and we appreciate you even thinking, a lot of people ain't even done a, it's not even.
They're not even community united, yes, they don't realize, they could do a lot of things to help our community.
And how much help is there too, help fleet?
And if we can do this one right.
I've yet to ask anybody for anything, but they didn't give it to us, can you believe that?
People also have.
We've had a new attitude, we have since we've been in office, I've had a new attitude, you have.
But you know why, Jackie? Because we've stood up and spoken, we're acting like people that want. To get something done.
And going.
Yes, yes.
And and say it completely.
Yes, yeah.
That that that, that's my issue.
Yes.
And that's what this thing says. There's a way to do it, you just gotta figure it out.
Well, I've got notes here. Go to the property owners first, those two down there. And, uh, now you're saying.
You think as a board that we could do but more with the, with that one than you?
I just don't know.
You can, Bobby.
I think I, I know, if anybody could get anything out of it, I'm like I could.
Let Jackie go there.
Bobby too, he likes Bobby too.
Well.
So you, you have a license to him?
I swear, everybody, I mean, I I don't have any problem.
I don't have no, no problem with, with any, with any of it.
And I tell you what a problem's gonna come in. Is that long section when, when, when they start this baloney about them not owning, I've seen it go four times.
Let's just let that die.
I don't, I think it's went beyond dying, I think the county's done.
It's worn, the house is a walker.
Yeah, I think it's on fire from what I'm hearing that.
Well, if the county, if the county says that, whatever problem they own, whatever they own, we can do it. And then if he says it too, we're covered, uh, every way.
Well, you're not even involved in that, so.
Don't go, cause we don't own no property, I mean, we've we've got a, we've got a, a right of way.
We've got a.
Or a easement, a easement rather than a right of way. Yeah, but somebody else own. Yeah, but somebody else own, but we've got access to.
You know, what, what they need to understand about these easements, those, those easements, if, if they were given for a back path, you can use them for a back path now.
Okay.
If, if they're given for a sewer or water line, that's what they're for, unless that.
Unless they're broken, okay.
Well, let me get back with the people with Safe Ritz to say. It may be that we can satisfy their program with just a, I'd like personally like to help the back path because Teresa has done a study, and believe it or not, and I'll tell you who told me this, Randy Eppard.
You know, I've.
He said, he lives in Berkeley, and he's personnel manager at your family.
He's a direct, he's a manager now, ain't he, of the whole thing?
I'm not sure he is.
Hasn't somebody told me that, that?
That's what I heard.
Plant manager.
He may be. He's really a great guy, I know that. But he told me that had we had a few more amenities, like walking paths, back paths, that he would leave over here. And you know, he's going on drive every day, but it helps us to attract better quality people.
But we've got good schools, he's just using that as excuse.
No, they know we've got.
We've got good, we've got churches.
And Lisa Murphy's got swimming pools.
Oh, we've got. I'll be in Dover.
Covered in.
We've got a swimming pool, we got a little pond, that.
Well, I know.
Four foot deep.
Or using that as an excuse.
Yeah, I think the man gonna be plant manager in the county, your label, your authority.
That's exactly right, that's an excuse he's using.
I bet he runs two weeks.
We got big churches, we got these schools.
Problem is, you probably can't.
Well, I just repeated what I was told.
Yeah.
And I do know communities are more attractive.
He'd give a beer over Andrew's too.
That's it, we're driving.
And ours would be more attractive to have our stream banks cleared out to where we can see the creek and things like that.
Yeah. That makes me mad. Ain't nothing here.
Well, I love Bobby.
We got, oh, I mean, really, he, you know.
Well, I've just.
We've got tail drag, and we've got the chariot, we got the most beautiful country in the state, but way, way further than that. Ain't nothing coming out of Andrew's, I married a woman tomorrow.
I'm only gonna try.
Best thing coming out of Andrew's is Highway twenty-eight in the Robbenfield.
Oh. No, I'm just, they are things, and I understand what Teresa's saying. What are we gonna, she's gonna have to tolerate in the meantime to get rid that I've, and I've had behind me there.
It's everywhere.
Yes, yeah. But you know where I have it now, in the place I've not cleared? What's cleaned up between the back of me and back of town up here?
Yeah.
You won't find these ridges.
Right.
But over there, what's behind those shelves.
You're exactly right.
And, uh, they, those trailers up there, that's where you'll find it.
They're too lazy to walk up that hill and get in the tank.
Yeah.
That's what, that's why, it's too, they, they roll them top.
And, and you, you'd have to say, from the time, first place you started right there, at that edge where the road was at.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
You cleared this one trail out, there was two more opened up.
Right.
You got them two cleared down, there was two different other paths opened up.
Oh, I don't know, Johnny, ain't been down.
But anyway, well, what do I do now?
It's, that's the landowners.
Landowners, and, and we'll get with this one.
We'll get with the one, you know.
You want me to go talk with him too? Yours might have.
Now, let us first.
Okay, well, I'm.
No.
You tell us what we're gonna ask him for.
Yeah.
Uh, well, you can tell him that we're getting ready to replace the sidewalk.
No, you don't, no, you don't, you don't, you weren't, you weren't gonna speak.
Then two, ask him.
Here, let me get you a note.
If he object to us putting the children back and have the adjacent, which would be on his property.
Which would be how?
We are.
It's, um.
They got it, they, they.
Five foot wide, I believe.
They got it too close.
I think it takes ten foot to do the whole thing. The sidewalk's four foot?
It is tight.
Ten foot to do the whole thing.
I don't know which.
But let me call you on that, Jackie.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To make sure, I think I'm right.
They both done done it.
And then I'll get your picture. I'll email it to Andy.
When, uh, when can you get a look of that dump that came?
And yours can carry it with you to show them. And that'll get the kids either. And they do right at the back and street.
I have a, which way is it gonna go? Which way would it go?
It ain't even, uh.
There's a basketball court.
Most of them.
They buy that.
You know, the fence is up, and then you've got that, there's a trailer.
No, no, it, uh.
This.
Most of that's garden, I mean, we can, we can handle.
Which way is that back path gonna go that?
Once we start taking.
Have to go sidewalk, wouldn't it?
And have to go sidewalk, could be a bear back into the sidewalk, in bear.
Do you know, it could probably go at the biking path, because let me show you. Sidewalk goes down through here.
Most of its trash.
And then the little basketball court's here. I wonder if that could start going round like that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, then, because there's trailer, there's, there's trailer here, and there's a trailer, waiting, and there's a trailer on that, there, that, for the.
I don't think. I don't believe there's enough room in that to.
So either.
I think the sidewalk could have to move more out here in the street. Only thing right across from there is a big lock pole. The energy, we'd have to get them to move it over, and then that would.
Seven three five.
If, I would give you in five foot, if, if they wanted.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking, see down through there's pretty straight.
Uh, I'm like, say.
It might could run out there and could get over more on me with this in here. See, what I'm saying is, cause I, we don't have room in front of this basketball court with that, and I don't.
I think, I, I think, I think it's, uh, it, it's less than three foot wide there.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, but.
Cause me, Larry Queen won four of that.
Were you? Well, anyway, if it wouldn't be too side bogged in or whatever, to move this street down over here to get both, if they'd agree. I wouldn't mind if the street was moved over, because they're actually businesses closer to the street than it. If you've got one car length of parking, uh, between you and the street, so given that, if, it's not gonna bother me. But now, you probably have to come in up here for her bones, and I don't know if he'd be as grateful. Uh, that brings, but I've got a pretty long drainage there.
Mm-hmm, you do.
Uh-huh. Where if it's wanting to ease over there to get three more feet or four, and get the back path too.
And that would bring, that would bring, bring you in, in, on the, oh.
Yeah, but I think.
I'm just wondering how they, they, what, what they would say about that gate, they've got that gated, uh, push button thing there on there, I mean, you know how it, it.
Well, well, I know that you know.
They're thinking about their property.
I've heard that.
If they can figure out who owns, they can't figure out who owns.
Well, they tried to buy it from the county.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh.
Ain't no deed for it. Now, the last time, we had to, uh, we had to claim a house and give it back to the family, you remember that?
Claimed a house and then gave.
Was it Hungry Bear? Or was it the Roberts' house? Remember when Max, when we, when we first come into office, we were having that problem on Ford Street? The town had to.
And what, that's before I got in here?
No, that, you, you too, that was Roberts', wasn't it, man? Posey Roberts' house?
I don't remember that.
I don't, I don't read.
There where.
It's gifted town, and it showed it in there that it would've been gifted to town a hundred years ago, and they couldn't not, Davey couldn't.
And where.
When that girl's up.
Leave the bank.
It's, it's, it's a little square.
Yeah. And if, if, if we could just come through there and maybe.
Roberts' house wasn't.
If, and we could just move over there a little bit, and.
I, 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 I think what we need to do is go ahead and move on with talking and getting.
Talking property.
Yeah.
Well, I'm on a, yeah.
We can do that with, with.
Jackie, yes, you'll do that, and then I'll talk to Philip.
We'll ball it in straight, we will.
Okay, and, uh, let me get your pictures taken and tell them what I said, if, if, uh, I, I don't think we can put a back path.
We don't wanna have that.
We can, we can move the road over, if, if, if roads come up there, they can move it over.
These properties.
Probably have that drainage ready in there too.
Oh.
Give us more of a basin.
Yes, now it's soon, they'll have.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
There's another, kind of bore.
Really, I think, I think, uh, one, with, I'm sure it's one thinking about, I'm, I'm drawing it up.
Oh, yes, I'll, I'll do that.
Want to do in that section now.
Right. Then I would go back.
That's the worst part about.
That'd be a good place to do them if they wanted, they could see what he did. And show the path, you know, show, show up.
Before, before the three-foot ditch was dug deep, there, before you fall off that sidewalk into.
But I think, of course, what it is, like a little basketball court.
Into, uh, uh, four foot of water. It could be a, a liability.
I've got some benches in there, and sitting area and everything, like we said.
We'll get through it in a little bit.
On the street, but it'll just take a little more effort, like, anything to do with government and people, where there's a lot of people involved, it just takes a lot longer. And I'll talk to Philip, his actual name, and tell him that.
We dug up enough pipes and dug over and crossed them up and hooked stuff to them in the past year to do eight or ten projects that, that we've, I'm honestly, God, we dug up water lines that were in twenty-five years ago, don't know why. Going over different directions.
I'm sure that's. Right.
A, a, and, and, I mean, they're just in your way now.
What's costing you anything to get?
Get them, get them.
All right.
And then they'll be getting it back after that, but.
Okay, and Steve, I brought something else. They adopted, our reimagining, the board did, but actually the county needs to adopt that. Would you wanna take that to them and ask them if they'd adopt that plan? So, we need, Bill, uh, our consultants know that you have adopted that plan.
Right.
And, uh, but we just wanted also to show in our county plans that they adopted it also.
The county plan's really out of our jurisdiction, that'd be up to them if they wanna adopt it, I mean, I don't see why that they would.
Well, she's saying, we asked them to go ahead and include ours in our, to one we've already done. I don't have no problem with it.
Brendan, you're saying.
County can say, yeah, you know, or whatever they want to.
Yes, that's different than the pedestrian connectivity.
Yes, we're talking about. So, they've adopted the reimagining, it's gonna, you want the county to adopt, is that what you're saying? Okay, but you said the board is, what board is already, this board has already adopted?
Well, what, what does it?
Yes.
I got you.
What was that, that the, the, the board of commission adopted in or doesn't that?
I don't know.
The, cause they had a board.
That was the, uh, the. That was the study on, uh, the growth, like fifty-year, year growth according to that plan that they were doing.
Fifteen percent growth.
Now, that, the, the reimagining Robin'sville plan. We, we adopted this as a guide, and I don't see.
It says it's a guide, I know I put guide in there. Look up in the first paragraph and see if I didn't include it in there.
Yeah, it's in there, yeah, and, and, and that, that's where we, that's where we come back, it, it is not.
Cut and start.
Supporting this plan, most of it we are, most of this whole plan.
You're using that for ideas, so you're taking into consideration what the community would like to see.
Ev- everything. Yeah, everything in this plan looked good to us except the, the greenway. That's, that's what bothered us, the greenway on this plan, like I said.
Well, I wish we could have re-studied that.
Bob? This, yes, sir.
Some way to.
I, I, I'll tell you what, this is the truth, a map with a line on it scares people. Scare them just a line, even a sewer line. But a map with a building on it or a bicycle going down the road is sort of easier on the eye to look at. Just see what's there.
Well, we know where we gotta go.
Okay.
Now, I'm gonna give you a picture of Ford Street also, and I'm gonna go talk to Bill tomorrow.
Okay.
And see if we can't get, they're really discussing Hawk and Heavy, the back pass. And, uh, Ford Street, that area in there for development, see if they're gonna include that in these drawings we're gonna be seeing. That'll help us out, and I'll ask him to move that sidewalk.
He told me he would do that from up there.
Yeah.
So, I'm going right back down there this afternoon.
That's what he was wanting to enter, he was so interested, and that, just since I left meeting, I, I took the Ford Street project drawings
Uh-huh.
down there to him, so they could see.
Obviously, what we've got.
Exactly where we're going.
Oh, that's, I'm so proud of y'all, I really.
Appreciate you, Brenda.
Well.
Pay your card.
Well, I'm looking to stay made over stuff, and you just have to keep working, work, you have to give people a chance to think about things. Personally, I prefer for everything just to click like that than it does.
Not working like that.
Not at all.
No.
And it's better to work easy with people, or you can make enemies for life.
I think that's a lot of what happened in the past, there's a lot of enemies for life there.
They, they, they were so many, they were so many fires, say, years ago, that's really slapped everybody.
Well, look at our Cherokee community, that could be one of our B T S S's.
Right, you're exactly right. The Cherokee, uh, uh, P V A, whenever they.
They were two, they were two locals on, on Ford Street, were told, yeah, we're coming across, she one way or the other. That, 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 that was when the first drainage
Yeah, uh-huh.
was, was thrown out. And then the next board to come in, they would want to finish the drainage, I think you was on it, and the two that sort of got ram-shotted first. Do you ain't come from, maybe we don't want you.
Well, that's in this mountain stubbornness.
And that was a project that went all the way to the stop sign, though, that was.
Thank you, Brenda.
Oh, you're welcome, I'll see y'all.
All right.
And we'll come into the dinner on Friday and for the go, the presentation of vinyl rock.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll have it, I'll have it at eleven o'clock.
I appreciate that, too.
And, uh, Brenda?
Uh-huh.
You might want to look on some other towns and stuff where they've done this kind of stuff.
Well, I have actually been doing that, and they tend to say, like Teresa, that it improves the community. It improves the appearance, it gives a cleaner look.
I didn't have to.
But in the meantime, that we wanna open it up to more less desirable.
True.
Yeah, or can we reroute it some other way a little bit? Now, that would be, we've got people, and it's like Sue, living down there by herself. I don't like the idea of scaring a widow that's a really good woman.
I know.
Yeah.
So, we might relook at that again.
I like it.
Should we look at it?
That way.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
I do like that, I mean, even, even, you know, even around, now, it's gonna take work to get the roads widened and get pedestrians safe.
Well, I'm had to say.
But that's their job, I mean, that's their job to make that road pedestrian, ain't our job, it's their job, we can, we can bring it up to them, hey, we'd like a bicycle through.
We need to have a walkway out to Juneau's and Newmarket.
I mean.
Well, we, 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 we got that in on that right there, by the, the, but they, they're also steadily coming too, but the state's supposed to be widening that out today.[1751.84]
Oh, great.
We're working on it.
Okay, well, that would give us more of a walkabout town.
Right.
Plus, it would open that up.
Mm-hmm.
Because Larry Glass was not saying that Museum and Bridge.
I know.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome. Sorry to take up all this time. I took more than my five minutes.
Took more than five minutes, that's all right.
All right, and number two again, is that Zumba Judo right code?
Yeah, they get a business rate code. They run a thing in New York, they do a nonprofit, and they want to run that one.
Nonprofit?
Yep. How do, how are they nonprofit? Look at that, Bobby, and see.
What are they?
For what money they take up and stuff they use at retirements and stuff like that?
I do too. They're already nonprofit?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's exercise.
They have to, they have to have something, and it'd be the state, they have to strip them. They have to, any nonprofit has to report to the state.
It says the uh corporation shall not accumulate its income if any such accumulations are unbelieved in. Non-accumulation. Wait a minute, here we go, here we go.
They have to be registered with the state secretary of state, so they'll be on the website if they're.
They check their own, are they?
There's some kind of.
Forty-nine, forty-two, revenue code, nineteen fifty-four.
They moved in, I can't remember, did they?
They bought, they they know where I made these.
They did.
They bought it.
They're going to go, well, good.
They bought, they bought the uh, the the old uh Gormly, Teresa Gormly, where she had her tanning salon in Ponchar. Uh, they they bought that. That's it, that's U business on Old Park Town. Right down here below Ziva McKinney's office.
The rock building?
The rock face front, that's that's the Zumba Judo.
Where the stable used to be.
No, no, it's just right right here at the corner, at the stop sign, the one Blue Bacon used to be.
The Zumba place is going in there, and they bought it.
Yeah.
What 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 do we do for?
I'll be good.
They've done, they've done.
I put cars back up there.
They've done, they've done, yeah, all the uh interior and all.
Yeah, well, they're working on it. I wonder what's going in there. The church mouse, say, the state.
Church mouse.
I don't know, that's that's a sure question.
It's nonprofit, ain't the church mouse?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think, do they do a business right on this church?
No, I have that church.
We need to check on that, but.
That's good, 'cause they're coming in town.
We need to be consistent.
Yeah, boy.
This down here, is that the church mouse?
Well, you're finding out about that I've reported to you, it's at the. Uh, the. Bob Gardner Electric has got the, uh, been awarded the contract for the the well project up here. Uh, and one of the things that uh had been done was the the phone line, and that will be supposedly done tomorrow. And.
Church. Good.
And that that'll be to our water panel long great.
Yes.
And uh, the uh. They 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 was, they was two postane lamins that bid forty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, and Bob Gardner Electric bid twenty-one thousand three. So, no, I mean, that's a, that's a over page, so.
Yeah, church does have, it's a nonprofit. They are, I'll say we give.
What do we give, what is it like? Second. Third. Nonprofit, yeah, it is.
What else, Steve?
Uh, that's all.
On that, on that twenty-one thousand too, we don't, that that percent.
That's not all, though.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what, how much they let us have on that other part of that grant. My dad had, went back and asked them for more money on the well project, and they gave us the twenty-one thousand. So it ain't gonna cost us anything.
Oh, good, that's good.
But we are going to uh. Have to change a valve up at the water plant, and I hope we can get the money that we have to to work the skater system as it should. We can fill one tank, but we need to be able to fill two. That's probably my fault. When we put the baby tank in, I wasn't dreaming about no skater system filling it, we should have been, but didn't even know what it was, didn't know what skater was, at least.
And uh, I I went through all of our streets, and uh we've got several signs that need to be replaced.
Do we replace them, or does it stay?
We do, because that's that's the city streets.
Okay, let's do it then, then.
Uh, stop signs are totally yelled about, that one, especially down here, Van Building off of Surfric Street. It's it's plum wide, you know.
Let's get a order.
We've got some, and I'm gonna get with the, I've already got one, some prices here and.
We need to look, how much money we got in streets?
Huh?
Twenty we got in streets, four signs of this button. None. We might.
Oh, gosh, yes, uh, you're looking at, just uh.
Probably.
Look, two, four, five, ten, fifteen. I'd say twenty signs already, uh, just uh, that's not doing five, that's uh, well, uh, about thirteen signs is seven, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and ten cents.
Well, that's that's just, that's regulated too, you know, the last.
Twenty-four, but.
Yeah, that's one thing we gotta check, keep putting wrong sizes up.
Sizes up, and you had to go back and and revise.
Four thousand dollars worth of signs.
Uh-huh, yeah, and they they also manage your signs, too small. Make that be like eighteen by twenty-four, minimum, or twenty-four, well, the stop signs. And Wesley Grand State, they go examine, and all, and he.
They got back, didn't they, Lisa?
Yep, yep.
So we did have enough time.
I told you we was gonna be in here now.
Does anybody else have anything? Jackie, Teresa?
Teresa's got some too.
You go, baby.
Sorry, Teresa.